The Planning Commission. Are there any items, one through four, that staff would like removed from the consent calendar? Any items that a Planning Commission member would like removed? Any items as audience member? I see none. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through four, with staff recommendations at this time.
Different.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now we're to the consent calendar.
End of consent.
Excuse me. End of consent calendar. Now we're to the regular agenda items. Item number five, please.
Thank you. Good morning. Item number five is 14 PD 027, a major amendment to plan development to allow a recreational vehicle to encroach into the front yard setback in the low-density residential district. This is on approximately 0.26 acres of property located at 52 Autumn Place, the southern terminus of Autumn Place. The applicant currently has a recreational vehicle parked on the south side of his property. A portion of the vehicle is encroaching in the front yard setback. Rapid City Municipal Code states that all recreational vehicles must be parked or stored behind the front setback line for when they're to be stored for a period of greater than 72 hours. The applicant was recently informed of this by Rapid City Code Enforcement and that the recreational vehicle would not be permitted within the front yard setback, and as such he has submitted this major amendment. Let me take you through some slides. Location, the arrow is a little bit south of the property. The property's hashed there, has the hashing on it. Zone low-density residential district. It's southern terminus of Autumn Place and to the east of Sheridan Lake Road. It's an aerial view of the property. Take note that the eastern portion of the property and southern portions of the property are currently developed with a large drainage channel, which you'll get to see a better view of here in a moment. Site plan. The proposed RV is located on this concrete pad. The RV, it does not encroach into the setback at this time. One stipulation of approval would be that it do not be allowed to encroach into the setback, or onto the sidewalk or into the right-of-way. It's a view of the townhome with the sign posted on the property. You can see there the RV as it's currently parked. View north on Autumn Place to see the development and the rest of the subdivision. Should note here that the applicant and some application materials did submit a letter from the members of the plan development and the members within the subdivision stating their support and approval of the proposed location of the RV. Here's another look at the RVs. You can see it's close, but it does not encroach. And as you can also see, there's not a lot of room for anything else in here. This is a look at the drainage channel that I spoke of earlier. As you can see, this entire southern portions of the property, and this extends around to the eastern sides of the property as well, there's no room for parking the RV at any other location on the site. A look from farther north on Autumn Place, looking south. Couple things to notice here. One, the location of the RV doesn't appear to be creating any negative impact to the neighborhood in general. And also, look at the commercial development on the other side of that drainage channel, the other side of the terminus of Autumn Place. Autumn Place is not a through street and doesn't anticipate, it's not anticipated that it will become a through street due to the commercial development in the southern, south of the property. Also notice that the commercial development to the south of the property means that the location of that RV isn't going to have large impact to properties in the south. One last look at the property. Due to the unique topographical constraints on the property and the support of members of the plan development and within the subdivision, staff is recommending support, the request to allow an RV to encroach in the front yard setback with the stipulations outlined in the staff report. Staff is available for questions at this time. The property owner is also here if you should have any questions for him.
Eve?
Yeah, looking at that, normally I would absolutely oppose something like this, but if you look to where they are, there's nothing on the other side of it. It's not like there's condos or anything in it together. So for what you showed me, I appreciate that because it looks like it shouldn't be any problems. I guess I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve item number five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number six.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The resolution before you today is to address instances when the city receives applications for de-annexation. Currently, we have no policy on what to do when we have an annexation. And with Carla's help, she went through a lot of case law that talked about when the cities were right in de-annexing, when they were right in denying a de-annexation request. And most of the time, it's really on a case-by-case basis, but really it kind of sort of boils down to what services the city's really providing, a piece of property. So what we did is we came up with some checklists, well, a checklist to help identify for the council when it's appropriate to consider a de-annexation and when it's really not. So it just kind of gives you a list of things to consider when an annexation or a de-annexation comes forward. And with that, we have, we do recommend approval, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Why do we need to de-annex?
Sometimes we, annexations occur to promote development in other areas. For example, the couple de-annexations that you're going to consider here shortly, those were annexed in conjunction with a tax increment district. That tax increment district did not move forward because, you know, at the time that they had that approved, the market tanked and the development wasn't, it had no validity anymore. They couldn't move forward with it. And so, you know, when you annex for, you know, certain reasons, a lot of times we annex for growth purposes. Right now, we just wanted to make sure that as the annexation petitions come forward, there was something for Planning Commission and council to consider, you know, during that process as they consider that de-annexation. That answer your question?
Well, not exactly, but, you know, we go through quite a bit of difficulty sometimes in annexing property. And we are looking at a community that is expanding. And then if we get to that point, five years, 10 years, then we'll have to go through the process of annexation again, if I'm understanding.
Correct.
So why do we need to reverse ourselves for a temporary period of time?
Well, sometimes there are benefits to the property owner to not be inside the city, especially if they're not receiving any kind of services from the city. You know, generally, we annex in anticipation of development. You know, if development doesn't occur, or there's reasons that, you know, the original development can't move forward, then it only makes sense to de-annex that property, you know, if it meets some criteria, some justifiable criteria.
So what I hear you saying is, there could be properties within that got annexed in that are receiving no benefit from city services whatsoever, but still paying a tax for those services? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you. I just wanted to add to the conversation that in state law, there is a place where the people can request to be de-annexed because they're not receiving services. So in this case of the next two, both of those that are coming up before us, they requested annexation. We didn't go out and seek them. They asked to be in the city limits, and so it's voluntary. And in the same regard, they're now saying, because of the lack of progress on those properties, they are still not receiving any services. So according to state law, they can request that. And if we agree, and the council agrees, they can de-annex them. And in these cases, or the next two that we're dealing with, they are not getting any services. They're just ag land property that had hoped to be part of the city and had hoped to get services in the future, and they're not. So they're not getting any benefit. Down the road, if something should happen and something, they do get some water, sewer, those kinds of services out there, then they'll probably want to be annexed again. Or we could, you know, 20 years from now, we might want to go out there. But in the meantime, you know, those property owners are being dis-serviced because they are getting taxed for nothing. So that's part of the reason why we have this resolution, is to kind of spell that out a little bit better. It's always been there, but we've never had it really spelled out, is what I understand.
One thing I want to add, we did specify that, you know, if there's a request to de-annex that's inside, you know, a donut hole area, you know, that's not logical to de-annex that. So we wanted to make, you know, some specific topics on, you know, what does seem logical, what's not logical, you know, why we kind of want to preserve annexed areas if necessary, like if it's in a specific growth area, or we know that utilities are going to be extended shortly, or, you know, any of those kinds of things. We just wanted to give everybody a list of things to consider before, you know, a de-annexation is approved.
Vicki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One important criteria that's listed in this ordinance is item number 14, which clearly states that property we would consider and support for de-annexation are those that are primarily being used for agricultural purposes, not those that we see ongoing development. As you'll see in the next two items coming up, these properties were agricultural, are agricultural, there's no anticipation for development. And certainly that is important, because we may see similar requests of others that want a de-annex, but if we see ongoing development, especially commercial development, whether they're using city utilities or not, but they're inside the city limits today, or they de-annex right up against the city limits, there's a design standard that's required in the city that we don't want to lose sight of. So those we would not be bringing forward to you to support. And I think that's an important element that's being considered in this ordinance.
Vicki, question for you. Would it be legal for us to, as we de-annex, to say that if the development occurs in the next five to 10 years, whatever, that they would be willing to be annexed again?
Madam Chair, I will defer to Carla on that one.
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
The question is, could we, as we de-annex, so we have them annexed, we de-annex for these rightful purposes, which I understand, but could we put a provision in there that says, once development occurs and it looks like it's going to be either commercial or residential, that you would be willing to, again, be annexed?
Well, I think we just recently amended our ordinance as Patsy was in, took the lead on that, to say that if you plat property within the three-mile boundary, correct me if I'm wrong, that if you're contiguous to the city, that you need to annex. That's been our policy for several decades, I believe, but it's now located in the ordinance. So I think that annexation, if the property is platted at all, would occur if the property's contiguous. I know one of the parcels here is next to the city limits and one of the parcels is, would not be. So I think that would get at your concern, Dennis, that if it's developed, that it be incorporated into the city. I did want to say also, just echo what Patsy and Vicki said, that the services that the property is receiving is a big part of the consideration that the courts have looked at in approving these or denying these de-annexations. It's not the only thing. They look at the burden to the property on being within the city limits, and that would be a situation where they're being taxed but not receiving services, or not receiving full services, or what have you. But one of the other considerations is what, how the de-annexation would affect the remaining city residents, and if there would work an injustice on the city residents, then the de-annexation might not be appropriate. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not just that they're not receiving city services, but a whole list of circumstances and considerations that are listed in the resolution.
Eve?
I understand what Dennis is saying, because we do this in other things where we have them sign a letter. And I was just curious, is that could be part of the criteria that you put together here, that they sign? And when we look at it, that that'd be something that is in there, so that they understand if they apply for that, that you're going to sign this letter saying this ever happens, then you will agree not to fight it? Because we do this on other things.
Yeah, once they're outside the city limits, and they went to go get a building permit in the county, I don't see where the city would have any jurisdiction over that. So I don't know that that agreement would be binding.
I guess what I would say is, if the property owners were willing to do that, that could be an agreement that was reached between the property owners and the city. If they're not willing to do that, there's still a process in state law where they can petition to de-annex, and where it may be appropriate and may not be. So without doing any research on your question about whether or not we can reach an agreement, I think we could, but they have, that's not the situation here, and there's a right for them to petition to de-annex without having to make that future obligation.
I understand there's a right to petition, but as the governing body, we have the right to put in conditions. And part of our conditions of acceptance of that is we could say, this is what we want to see, because ultimately, we're going to make the decision of whether we de-annex or not. One of our criteria, as the Planning Commission, we could say, yes, we agree with you, but this is what we want in order to grant you that de-annexation. That's what I'm saying.
This isn't a question I've researched, so I'm a little cautious to give you any direction right now to say if that would be a stipulation of approval. I do think that if they would have to plat and they would be contiguous to the city limits, they would need to annex. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but they would need to annex. And if they weren't contiguous to the city and they platted, I don't believe that under state law, you can annex an island, except in a certain situation. So I guess that's what I would tell you at this time. If you'd like me to do some more research, I sure can do that.
Dennis?
I would agree with Steve. I think that we should take a look at it to see if we should add this as another criteria, maybe number 15 on this list. So once you have been annexed, you know, we don't want to go through the factor that, okay, now you're part of the city, or whatever. So I think if we could research that, bring that back to the commission, and see if we can add that as another criteria.
One of the reasons that I did not include that as one of the criteria is because we already have it in the ordinance. If they're adjacent to city limits and they want to plat and they want to extend utilities, it's already in our ordinance instead of a resolution form. And that's why we changed it from a resolution to an ordinance, so that the policy didn't, you know, just sort of sit on the table and, you know, if somebody didn't remember that there was a policy out there. That's exactly why we put it into an ordinance, so that they are required to annex if they want those services. So I think we're already covered, because it's in the ordinance today under the subdivision I don't know that state law, I don't know that, in my opinion, based on reading, you know, the case law, I don't know that we would have any justification or any validation to require an agreement for annexation if we've already got it in the ordinance. That's just my opinion, though.
Karen?
There was an agreement at one point made with a certain party, and he agreed to annex as soon as he got homes and the property started to be developed. Unfortunately, he sold those homes to other people. He'd no longer own that property. And so when we wanted to annex, the people said, well, I don't want to annex into the city. So it really creates a confusion about what's legal and what's not legal. And I think it's real difficult for us to say to somebody, okay, we want you to annex once you develop, but unless they're willing, it's kind of difficult. And because we do have that platting ability now that is in ordinance, I think we're covered for what we're doing. It's a confusion if we do an agreement, because an agreement, I don't know that is that binding unless you, I don't know. To me, an agreement and a resolution, they can be changed, but an ordinance is more permanent, so.
Is there a motion? Motion's been made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item number seven.
Items number seven and eight are petitions for de-annexation. The staff recommendation is to approve these, however, we did want to note that because state law requires that de-annexation, or annexation for that matter, does not create a discontinuous city limit, we just want to bring it to your attention that these items should be considered simultaneously. That's maybe what we recommend this morning. For example, if item number eight is approved, item number seven must also be approved. So I guess would the Planning Commission consider both applications simultaneously and take action on them separately?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the two areas for de-annexation are located in southeast Rapid City. For some orientation, this is Highway 44 headed out to the valley, and Reservoir Road is right here. Note that this is Elk's Country Estates, a residential subdivision development. As Patsy alluded to earlier, these properties were annexed in 2007 and 2008 voluntarily. In 2007, they were annexed to secure utilities for the proposed Morningside subdivision. And in 2008, they were annexed to, for a tax increment district, tax increment financing district, which has since been dissolved with no funds expended. Take a look at some site photos. This is looking south from Reservoir Road. As you can see, the properties today are used solely for agricultural purposes. 14A and 003 is zoned for residential and commercial development, but that was a result of the rezone after the time that they were annexed. Future land use map shows that they're appropriate for residential development in the future. However, the comp plan also supports conservation of agriculture where development is limited Here's a few site photos for 14A and 002. This is looking north to Elk Country Estates subdivision, looking south. And this is looking down Reservoir Road from Highway 44. And staff in reviewing these applications found that overall, the major considerations were that these properties are used solely for agricultural purposes, and they are not currently using any city utilities. And for that reason, the staff recommendation was for approval of these petitions for de-annexation. And I can answer any other specific questions that you may have.
Dennis?
In one of your slides, it did look like there was not only streets, but water was developed there, back.
Is this the map you were asking about?
No. There was some houses and water. Fire hydrant.
Okay.
There.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Several years ago, we had a developer that previously owned this, and he brought forward a subdivision that was going to be developed in phases. It was known as Morning Star. I think we all put a lot of time into reviewing that one, and there were utilities that were out at the initial onset of the development and along Reservoir Road. However, the lots never got sold, the development was not successful, and the land went on the market for sale, was purchased for agricultural prices, and was reverted and retained in an agricultural nature. So unfortunately, there's probably some unused improvements there and disposable at best.
Can you go to the speaker?
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
This is a view of Jolly Lane looking north. If you look just to the east of that water hydrant, which would be on your right, that is the property that belongs to the Lamb's, and that is one of his hayfields. But you're right, as soon as this particular Elk's Country Estates subdivision extends itself and Minnesota Street comes in, utilities will be adjacent to Mr. Lamb's property. And so when he decides to develop and extend utilities to his property, he will have to annex again before those utilities are extended. But those particular utilities are adjacent to Mr. Lamb.
Do you want to make a comment?
I believe one thing that was stated was not-
Would you give your name first?
My name is David Lamb. I'm the owner of the property that was taken in to facilitate the Morning Star development, which was a island development until they made it a peninsula development by taking our property involuntarily. But what I wanted to correct, I believe, is that the fire hydrants seen along Reservoir Road were installed in the course of installing a water main and tie into the Rapid City land, or disposal facility, I believe. But I think they just put them in at the time, or are those Rapid? Yeah. Highmark Construction put those in about a year or two ago, and they don't serve any of these properties there. They only are involved with serving properties that are developed.
Any other questions?
And I thought this was true, I want to confirm it. They're supplied by Rapid Valley Water Company, not by Rapid City.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move approval of items seven and eight to de-annex both of these properties.
Seconded by John. All those, I'll vote on each one separately, if that's okay, just so that it's on the record.
You can take them as a-
Oh, but, no, both, sorry. All those in favor of the motion to pass items seven and eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any other items? Vicki?
Just one. One of our administrative secretaries in our division, Carol Campbell, has tendered her resignation, and next week will be her last week. And she's leaving just for the purposes of moving on and trying new adventures, and we wish her well. And she's been a huge support for this commission, and even though you don't see her face at this meeting, it wouldn't be possible without her assistance. And just wanted to thank her for all the services she's given us.
Yes, I'd like to thank her, too. I know I've received emails. Steve?
Going back, I didn't want to continue the discussion before, but going back to approval, there was, I would still like to request that the staff does look into what Dennis had visited about and come back with us with more information about. I didn't want to hold them up, because I didn't want to affect that before us. But I still think there are instances where that might be appropriate, and maybe find a way that we tie it to the land. That way, as Karen said, if it sells or whatever, it still goes with that. And I just like the information. I didn't want to, again, hold those up, so I thought I'd wait till after to ask that.
So if you could investigate that, since it's under ordinance, what the difference, you know, so we understand-
And I just like the information, I didn't want to, again, hold those up, so I thought I'd wait till after to ask that.
So if you could investigate that, since it's under ordinance, what the difference, you know, so we understand it better, so we can make better decisions, so we could appreciate a little bit of education. Take a motion for adjournment? Motion, we're adjourned. Nobody seconded, but everybody seconded.